I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with its sayings, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay, for tonight's meeting, all members are present this evening as a roll call. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda as listed?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda if I can.
Okay, do I have a second?
The amendment for...
Okay, I would like to get an update on next steps for the November referendum so that we can just hear what's going on with that. I didn't see it on the agenda to talk about security of our staff, students, the extra classroom size that we need. Didn't know if there was an update for that.
Okay, I know Dr. Stallow is planning on talking about that in her superintendent report. So, sorry, it's gonna be discussion, I mean, there's gonna be comment on that at that time. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I have a second, that way we get it written on the agenda, so as long as we're gonna cover it anyway, but it's a good thing to...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. That fails, two five. Okay, so I think I need a motion for the agenda as listed.
So moved.
By Ben, second?
Second.
By Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
That passes, six one. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. And consent agenda items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless so requested. And for tonight, the check wire transfer dispersment and summary as listed, the approval of the school board minutes from the regular board meeting May 9th, 2016, the board study session, May 23rd, 2016, the special board meeting, May 27th, 2016, resignations, terminations, non-renewals as listed. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By, is that Chad? Chad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, seven zero. Next up is the resolution for acceptance of gifts. Those are listed in your packet. What was that? Fifteen one. Oh, there we go, got it. So whereas the following members have generously donated to the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools and they are listed in your packet, this is a roll call vote. Do I have a motion to accept the acceptance, the resolution for the acceptance of gifts?
So moved.
By, I'm gonna freak... Thank you. I usually don't screw up on your name.
No worries, no worries.
By Rich. A second?
Second.
By Dan. All those, roll call, sorry. Chad?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Aye. Rich?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
That passes, seven zero. Next up is Laker Pride. Dr. Stallow.
Good evening, everyone. I am delighted to have a full house this evening as we do a very special Laker Pride. It is a privilege and an honor to recognize and to celebrate our student representative to the school board, Maddie Tyson. Maddie was one of the first students that I met when I came to Prior Lake this summer. I remember our first lunch very well. I was impressed by her, the conversation. I was impressed by her commitment to Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, her leadership, and how humble and well-versed she was. Maddie immediately became one of my go-to people, and what I learned later was she's many of others' go-to people. Maddie's been described by one of our leaders as a selfless servant leader who touched almost every meaningful activity at Prior Lake High School this year. And I'm just gonna highlight a few of those things. You get a scope of what this amazing young woman is doing outside of the classroom. She helped us actually kick off our school year, if y'all remember, at the staff, at the staff breakfast. Her acting and organizational skills impressed me very much. She's a super fan. She helped organize the homecoming dance and all the activities that surround that, including the Powder Puff game and the pep fest. She organized the dodgeball tournament, the Sweethearts Dance, the Senior Outdoor Movie, the Senior Kickball Tournament, the Senior Sand Volleyball Tournament, and prom. So absolutely unbelievable in regards to everything else she does as well. Maddie's had the pulse on the student body of Prior Lake High School. She was a true spokesperson and organizer of the class of 2016. She was always the first person to arrive and the last person to leave any event and made sure that she was there till the end cleaning things up. Maddie spent countless hours planning and communicating with administrators and staff at the high school to make sure that school spirit and students were represented at every activity. Not only has Maddie served as the vice president and the president of the Prior Lake High School Student Council and is the student representative to the school board, Maddie has also served as the vice president of the Minnesota Association of Student Council Executive Board. Maddie has served Prior Lake Savage Area Schools and our entire state this year. The world is run by the people who show up. Maddie has shown up again and again and again, and I can't thank you enough on behalf of all of us for being such an amazing representative, for always being willing to extend a hand and for truly doing some amazing work. We can't wait to see how you change the world. Good luck and thank you.
I always cry. I'm not gonna cry though. Well, this year has been obviously my favorite year at Prior Lake. A little story, I was in the mentor program this year at my school and we, I mentored one quarter with my aunt at Target Corporation, she's a fashion designer, and then the next quarter at Lakeville City Hall and with a public administrator there. And I got to sit in on a lot of meetings like this and really fun, like finance meetings. It was like not as glamorous as I thought it would be. After my mentorship there, this man who was there all the time, he came up to me, he's like, "Well, I bet you, if you learned anything, I bet you learned that not a lot gets done in meetings." And I was like, "Hmm, yeah." And I was like, "Yeah, I already..." It's like, "I already know that." Just kidding, just kidding. But it's been... It's been a great experience and I'm gonna take a lot away from this board and of course, Prior Lake as a whole. So thank you, guys.
One final thing, as Maddie's parting gift, she will be getting her nameplate and holder, but not until after the meeting.
Talk to Martha.
Next up is the open forum. And this is a 15-minute time period set aside to receive citizen input through this open forum segment. I have two members of the public that have requested to come up. Up first, I have Bill DeMars. And just so people understand, open forum, the board listens carefully to all comments on topics, but we formally do not respond because we're a board and so we usually have to have discussion before we do that. So if there's any other questions about anything tonight, either myself or an administrator can get back to you if you have questions regarding something. Don't you so... Okay.
We'll make it easy.
All right, if you could just state your name and address and then...
My name is Bill DeMars. I live at 17711 Golden View Lane, southwest in Prior Lake. The school board, Dr. Stallow. Last March, when the school board made the decision to ask the community to support a referendum which addressed the needs of the district and the students, a group of parents, community members were in the same room to let you know of our support for the May referendum. While the referendum did not pass, I want you to know there are thousands of community members who support you and your important work you have done to plan for unprecedented student enrollment growth throughout the district. I believe this election was lost not because there was a lack of support in the community, but due to the fact that a small group made a decision to make distorted numbers along with inaccurate and even personal attacks to get the result they desired. Ensure the referendum fails. We know differences of opinion certainly exist and we respect their opinions, but we do not support our negative opinions that result in tactics that are unethical and certainly do not have, that certainly do not have the best interest of the students in mind. The public should know that the goal of this opposing group was to use negative and distorted information even after they were presented with the facts to their advantage. I strongly encourage you to continue the important work to ensure we make the best decision for our students and the district into the future. Our students and staff deserve to have a supportive community and we want you to know that we stand behind you now as firmly as we did in March.
Okay, and next up, Sean Budette.
Everyone, my name is Sean Budette. I live at 17294 Sunry Circle, southwest in Prior Lake. I come before you tonight to share my thoughts on our failed referendum proposal. I am a proud resident of this community and a proud father of three young boys. I stand before you tonight, however, with a great deal of pride as a fifth grade teacher and as the president of the Prior Lake Savage Education Association, an association that represents our nearly 600 teachers in this district. First, I would like to thank the school board for the process that was carried out in putting forth this referendum proposal. The process was thorough and there were ample opportunities for our community members to share their thoughts and give input along the way. That input was received, discussed, debated, and ultimately a decision was made to move forward with the proposal. Secondly, I would like to thank the school, I would like the school board to know that myself along with the rest of our association is here to support you in your efforts moving forward, but we believe your efforts need to be unified. The failure of this referendum is going to have significant impacts on our students in the coming years. I don't believe the community members that voted against this proposal truly understand this impact. Right now, we have music teachers who don't have a classroom to call their own. That has a negative impact on the learning taking place for all of our students in that school. Right now, we have a high school lunchroom that holds 2,000 students. The nearly 2,500 students currently at the high school are split into five lunches starting at 10:15 and going until 12:52. This has a negative impact on our students. Right now, we are short seven classrooms at the high school, which creates larger and larger class sizes. This has a negative impact on our students. When computer labs are being turned into classrooms because we don't have enough space, that has a negative impact on the learning taking place for all of our students in that school. As a teacher, I see the challenges that our lack of space is causing for our staff and students, and I now wonder what the next steps will be to deal with our rapid growth without being able to add the space we need. Lastly, I want to share with you that we as teachers do not feel that we have a unified school board and we need a unified school board to support our work to advance student achievement and development. Our mission is to educate all learners, so we all need to make sure that what we contribute to our school district as teachers, support staff, administrators, or school board members puts students and their learning first. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, next items, personnel items. Matt?
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Stallow. First up tonight, I would like to recommend the following candidates for, candidates for employment and seeking board approval.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the candidates for employment as listed?
So moved.
By Melissa, second?
I'll second.
By Dan. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes, seven zero.
And next up, I recommend that the board rescind the unemployment agreement for an employee. I just wanna be clear, this is an employee who is actually staying put in his current assignment to provide greater continuity in the classroom. This is not relieving somebody of a job opportunity.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the rescinded employment agreement?
So moved.
By Todd, second?
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes, seven zero.
And next, I present the following leaves of absence and of seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the approval of the leaves of absence as listed?
So moved.
By Ben, second?
Second.
By Todd. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes, seven zero.
And next, I'm presenting two job descriptions, the first of which is the job description for the Director of Teaching and Learning. This is a, it's listed as new in the board packet. However, the title is new, the position is not. This is the position that's replacing our current curriculum coordinator. And when we reviewed the alignment of titles within our system, it's appropriate that this position come with the title of director, given the direct reports to this person as a supervisor. There were some changes as well to just update and more accurately capture the duties contained within that job. And next is the Director of Special Education. This is a revised job description, again, no real material changes, however, changes were made to make sure that it really matches with the current reality of our expectations of the special ed director in the district. So with that, I make the recommendation.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the new and revised approval job descriptions as listed?
So moved.
By Melissa, second?
I'll second. Yeah, Dan.
Sorry.
I have a question.
You do have a question?
Yes.
Okay, yep. Go ahead.
Just clarification either for Jeff or Terry or it doesn't really matter. I see that the Director of Special Ed will report to the Assistant Superintendent and/or the Superintendent, but will be evaluated by the Assistant Superintendent. How, just, how does that work?
They'll report to the Assistant Superintendent.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to clarify too, that's, that's not a change from current practice.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, seven zero.
And next up, I'm presenting a staffing request for the 1617 school year. First up there are two special education positions, a .2 increase in speech-language pathologist at the high school, and then a 1.0 addition at Twin Oaks in their Level Three CID program, or EBD program, rather. And with those positions, the, the need for those positions has been driven by student need and enrollment here. Then, next step is an increase in hours to our data and assessment coordinator. This is a teacher on special assignment position, and what this essentially accomplishes is adding an additional 20 days to that assignment. And what that will allow for us to do is really make sure that we're able to start into the next year with all of the information that we need to at our sites so that we can be up and running effectively. It will also allow for our data and assessment coordinator to work with teachers and administrators over the summer as well on some of the work that they need to do in preparation for next year. So with that, I make the request.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept, accept the additional staffing for 201617 licensed staff?
So moved.
By Chad, second?
I'll second the motion.
By Rich. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes, seven zero.
And next up, I am presenting a staffing request, an educational support staff staffing request for the 1617 school year. And this is for a .5 curriculum and instruction secretary. As we look at the clerical needs within the curriculum and assessment office, or instruction and assessment office, we currently have a number of employees doing data entry whose time would be much better spent engaging with our leaders and teachers and making sure that we're really focusing on the work that needs to get accomplished. And so we're making this .5 request of the board. In addition to that, too, in addition to the request here, I did just wanna give the board a little bit of additional info on a staffing request that we've identified a need for but is not appearing before you tonight, but I wanna give you a heads up because we're going to be preparing a staffing request. We found that there is also some additional clerical needs within our finance department, our business services department, and that's been driven, first of all, by the increased enrollment needs that we have. Our enrollment, all, the first point of contact is in our business services department. And we've found that over the summer months, especially where we also run into the audit there, we're significantly short-staffed. On top of that, too, there were, there were new statutory reporting mandates that just got enacted recently. And so we're anticipating, too, that that's going to create a situation that will add to that workload consistently throughout the year. So I just wanted to give the board a heads up that I do anticipate that there will be a need in that area and will bring a formal proposal in our, in July.
Okay, do I have a motion to add the additional staff or educational support staff for next year?
So moved.
By Melissa, second?
Second.
By Dan. Any questions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, seven zero. Onto old business, Julie.
Our screen is not up on this, so we're trying to run that from... We have Jim Delwell tonight, Chair Ruel, board members, and Dr. Stallow. We are working through this process of discussing our long-term facilities maintenance projects. This is a new funding source for us that the district has levied last fall for this funding, and we wanna just go through the history so that the board totally understands what this process has been and where we're going. So I'll let Jim talk a little bit about that process.
Thank you, Julie. Good evening. Long-term facilities maintenance projects are, been an ongoing issue for this district since I've been here, since 2008. 2012, we started looking at it seriously as a 10-year plan. And the object, the objective of that is to address facility needs so that we protect the capital investment of our community. We have 1.3 million square feet of buildings, and it's a lot of buildings and they need a lot of work.
I have a screen here, so is there any way that we can do this?
Okay, history. Needs were first identified for long-term facilities, other than five-year capital and deferred maintenance that we used to have in 2012. If you remember, we prioritized the projects in Group A and B, which was not necessarily A is more important than B, it just made sense to work some projects ahead of other projects. And so Twin Oaks, New Boiler Plant, Hidden Oaks New Boiler Plant, Five Hawks New Boiler, Westwood New Boiler, and a lot of other work. That was three years ago. Projects have been presented to the school board and facility committee for review and input. Group A and portions of Group B have been completed as of last year, 2014, 15. Remaining Group B projects included the board-approved 10-year plan and was submitted and approved by the Minnesota Department of Education August of 2015. Our objective, again, in addressing facilities' needs has always been to minimize cost to community by protecting their capital investment in our community. Some of the milestones on where we, how we've got to where we are now, back in 2012, we started looking at our facility, we did an inventory and reviewed. We had a couple of vendors come in and present to help us with solutions on managing the projects and financing the projects. The board was presented with Nexus Solution after interviewing two different consultants. In July 2012, the board approved Nexus Solutions Facilities Consultant Proposal. Again, ongoing work with Comprehensive Facility Improvement Plan was presented. Financial solution to address the comprehensive plan was presented in November 2012. Financial solution quickly followed on that. Full board was invited, line-by-line review of the Comprehensive Facility Improvement Plan. In November of 2012, Nexus Solutions presented a Comprehensive Facilities Improvement Plan, so that was the work. We had a community forum in November of 2012. We had board involvement and study sessions and facility meetings, and in 2012, school board authorized the long-term facility plan. I'll let Julie speak to statute.
As we worked through this plan back in 2012, we knew that we did not have a way, we could only complete certain amount of our projects because we didn't have the funding sources to do some of our projects. So we could, at that time, health and, we had two opportunities through health and safety and deferred maintenance. Those were only two opportunities that the district had, or funding sources at that time that the district had, to address all of these deferred maintenance and health and safety issues for the district. In 2012, there was something else called alternative facilities. The district, because of the square footage of the district and the size, we, and age, thank you, we did not qualify for that funding. So some of the largest schools had the opportunity to qualify for alternative facilities, but we did not. And so therefore, that's why projects got grouped into Group A and into Group B because we only had a certain amount of funding that we could do through health and safety and through deferred maintenance in order to address the issues that the district had. And so when, in 2015, the legislature approved this new funding source, long-term facility maintenance revenue, and that allowed districts such as ours to have a funding source now for some of these deferred maintenance items that we have had ongoing again since 2012. Now, our district was very much ahead of the game. As, I don't know if you recall, last year, in June, they board, or the legislature went into a special session because they couldn't come to consensus on some things. So it was like June 15th or 13th, I wanna say, when the legislature finally finished their work last year. And so, at that time... And so at that time, they gave us such a short amount of time last summer to have the work on our 10-year plan completed and approved to the, to the MDE by the middle of August. But our district was a step ahead of the game because we had this plan already. So we were able to finally take the projects that we weren't, hadn't completed to date and enter them on our long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan according to this new funding source that we had. And so it really was some, the work of the legislature at that time, and it's 25% aid, and the remaining part is levy. And it replaces that health and safety levy that we had had in the past and the deferred maintenance levy that the district had had in the past. So I talked a little bit about these timelines. And so we had the board meeting, the legislature approved the revenue stream. We had the board meeting in July talking about this. They had a facility meeting addressing those Group B projects, talking about utilizing this long-term facility maintenance revenue. The board meeting, I gave an administrative update saying we were utilizing this funding source. And then at the board meeting in August 24th, the board unanimously approved our 10-year long-term facility plan that addressed all of those remaining Group B projects. And since then, in this current year, we've had some study sessions as part of our referendum. What we wanted to do, and I just want to remind the board that what we did is, we said, "We want a comprehensive look at our district." And in order to take a really comprehensive look at the needs of our district, we had to include those projects on our 10-year plan because we needed to see, should they be as part of our referendum or should they be, stay separate? And at that time, the board was very adamant that these projects remain as separate items because we get the 25% state aid. And that was the reason that the board was really adamant that we remain, that these projects remain on our long-term facility maintenance revenue. So that's kind of brought us to today and going through this. We have, and I'll let Jim finish talking about what these uses are.
Long-term facility maintenance uses are capital and maintenance projects, health and safety, which we've had before, it's just a different funding source for that, and ADA compliance. Roof's envelopes, flooring, parking lots, mechanical equipment, or it corrects hazards and compliance issues under health and safety.
So why do we utilize this funding source? Is the legislature recognized the need for school districts to maintain their assets? As Jim had said, it replaces all deferred maintenance and health and safety programs we've had in the past. They're physically independent of our referendum and we receive that 25% state aid. So it's cost-effective. Something that we just haven't had. It's always been a total levy to our taxpayers, whatever we've had to do. And this really is something that we can do and receive that aid.
So based on the list that you all have, these are the sites that would get long-term facility maintenance projects, Five Hocks, Jeffers, Westwood, Greenwood, Hidden Oaks, Twin Oaks, and the high school. And here are just some illustrations of some of the work that we're looking at. The high school roof, the center of the building, you can see the water staining and ponding. That will come before you tonight as hopefully an approval. We have some envelope and window issues at all of the schools, but this happens to be Westwood. Some more Westwood envelope. Five Hocks, loading dock, and throughout that original building, there's a lot of spalling. And that's an indication of moisture traveling through the building to the outside. We have quite a bit of that. Five Hocks gymnasium, VCT flooring, that's starting to show its age. Some concession stand at Twin Oaks, that roofing needs to be done. And here's the boiler at Greenwood. In the last couple of years, maintenance has been $30,000 in re tubing and mud leg repair. Again, original boiler for that building, and it's really starting to show its age. Here's the budget for the long-term facilities projects. And should be, you also have that list, which, that shows all of the projects.
Any questions on what we presented tonight? And then so bringing forward this information, the request is that we would bond 12.7 million dollars for these projects as we move forwards. We can complete them over the next couple of years, keep our buildings in good working condition for the future of ours, facilities and staff and students.
Actually, I do have one quick question that kind of rolls over into the bonding also. If we do approve this bonding and then the long-term facilities maintenance, does that further tie us into any contracts that we may already have? For instance, I remember reading the contract with Nexus and it said, "Part three starts when we, when we do the bonding, stage three." So does approving this automatically start stage three or?
It wouldn't necessarily have to. We, the district, can do all of these projects on our own.
Okay.
We certainly would have that ability, like the roofing, we don't include any of that. It's part of our own, our own projects. And so a lot of our pavements and building envelope, those things, we do a lot of that work on our own. It would not have to.
Melissa. I guess I need a little bit more clarification. You say, "Wouldn't necessarily tie us in?" Do we have any, any other?
Discussion of how we want to move forward with that. It certainly would be something that the board would, if they would want to review that. They have that opportunity at any time to look at that and see how they want to move forward. If that's something you want us to do on our own, we certainly would be able to do that. Or we can move forward with our partners with Nexus, either one.
Because I think that might be a good idea because we have heard questions from the community about that. Might be worth just having another look to make sure we're doing our due diligence. We want what's best for the district and for the staff and the students.
Jim, just off the top of your head, I mean, you've come to us in the past many times, said we were going to do this internally, did, the high school roof is a good example. You know the list pretty, pretty well backward and forward. What would you assume, just off the top of your head, would be something that we're going to, the amount that you obviously want to tackle on your own? Half, three quarters, 25%? Any idea?
I really couldn't put it down. I'd have to look at the list, Dan. I will say this, that Nexus offers expertise that we don't have in-house. For instance, tuck pointing is, I'm not an expert in tuck pointing and I certainly want to make sure it was done correctly. The roofs, we also use another consultant, Garland Roofing. They, you know, they provide a roof system, they make sure that the roof goes in correctly. Again, I'm not a roofing expert. There's a lot of things that have to happen exactly correct. But there is certainly on that list, there's a lot of things that we can do internally and in-house. And typically, we did too on the Group A and B projects, we've done a lot of work ourselves.
Especially these first few projects that we're doing, that we already have planned for the summer, the roofing would simply be through our partners with Garland.
Any other questions? Melissa.
And Jim, thanks for the clarification. Those items that are done in-house, is it my understanding that Nexus Solution would get a percentage of that, of the items?
The only way that we would have that is if they were doing our bidding for us and the paperwork and the financials would run through them. That's the only time that they would ever receive any funding for those in-house projects. So when we would go, let's say that we had to do some bidding, we don't have that expertise in-house to put the bids together, they would review those projects, just making sure that everything that we're doing is correct, then they would get that 1%. But it would really take some paperwork and some financial things happening with them in order for them to receive any funding.
Okay, so, but just for my clarification, specifically for this, this is a resolution to, the intention to issue general obligation bonds? So this is purely the financing piece of it?
This is purely the financing.
With Ellers that we do?
Yes.
The financing?
Correct. Yes.
Any other questions?
Is Ellers going to come through and discuss tonight the materials that are in the packet from Ellers?
Ellers is not here tonight because of a short notice. They were unable to make it tonight, they had other obligations. If you have questions that I can't answer, I have a phone number to call in case there's something I could not answer.
Yep.
One more question, Stacy, thank you. Bank qualification that was listed on the Ellers report, if you can, do you have any background on that? Because it said that because the district is issuing more than $10 million in exempt obligation during the calendar year, the district will not be able to designate the bonds as bank qualified. Walk me through that.
So in order for a district to have a bank-qualified bond, it would have to be less than $10 million in a calendar year. The district has already refinanced bonds in this calendar year. And so automatically, these bonds do not qualify. We refinanced bonds of $21,400,000. And so we would not, these would not be bank-qualified. Typically, in a bank-qualified bond, it's a tax-exempt situation so that you're able to get maybe a little bit better interest rate. But when I talk to Ellers concerning bank-qualified, their answer is because of the shortness of this bonding period that it most likely isn't a big difference for our district, especially with interest rates being so low. They're on, you know, they would not say that we would even get any lower interest rates at this point.
Yep, Todd.
So if we go ahead and prove this tonight and we get bids from Ellers, we accept those bids, is there an increase to the taxpayers' floor costs?
No, because we've already levied for these dollars.
And that was based on the vote from August 2015?
August.
When it was six zero?
It's correct.
Any other questions?
Just have a comment, I guess I'm not, I don't think I'd be able to support it at this time just because we don't have a comprehensive plan that we've talked about yet with the whole referendum coming around. So that's, no, not 100% remain to the conversation, but it's explanation.
I think maybe one of the questions might be, what if we went ahead with replacing some of this carpet? Are we then, when we have our referendum in November, which hopefully would pass, are we, are we going to be creating some rework? Are we, you know, we need a comprehensive plan to make sure we're not just making repairs now to something that might be reconstructed after November?
Do you want to address that, Jim?
Sure. We look very, very carefully at coordinating on projects and if, we certainly wouldn't do anything that we would have to tear out, so. And the things we did do now, we would protect. And it's very similar to many of the projects we do.
Any other questions?
Actually, yeah. So again, to Todd's point, I think just for clarification, we're voting on the intention to seek pricing for bonds, not approve any construction projects, correct?
At this point, that's correct.
Thank you.
However, later on in this agenda, we do have the roofing projects that we have taken bids on, but...
Yep, understood, I just want to make sure that we all understood that was the case.
And as far as the timing of this, I mean, we like to do the work, obviously. Can you speak to the timing of why we're doing this now? I mean, as far as like roofing and that kind of thing?
But for roofing projects, it's always better to do work on the summer. We kind of got away with one this year at Twin Oaks. I have to thank the staff at Twin Oaks, roofing occupied is a very difficult thing. They handled it very well, but it's really not the way we like to do projects, especially roofing.
Don't like to have the roof blow off in the middle of the year either, so I mean, we had...
Yeah, but we expanded that project to it. Again, the staff was very understanding of that.
Okay. All right, any other discussion, comments? Okay. So do we have a motion to accept, and Martha, I should read this, correct? The resolution part? In its entirety, okay. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution stating the intention of the school board to issue general obligation bonds to finance projects included in the district's approved 10-year facility plan? Common ending, sorry, I'm not going to say that right. Obligating the district to be bound and to use the provisions of the Minnesota Statute, Section 126(c)(55) to guarantee the payment of principal and interest of the bonds. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Ben, this is roll call, correct? Okay. Chad?
No.
Ben?
Aye.
Uh, Dan?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Aye. Rich?
Aye.
Melissa?
No.
That passes five two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then new business, next up, Julie, the budget presentation?
I'd be tired of hearing me speak after all of these things that I'm going through tonight. We went through several months of budget preparation for tonight's meeting. This is our preliminary budget. We have to, by law, have a preliminary budget approved by June 30th for the next fiscal year. And as part of our discussion for our budget, we do talk about our strategic roadmap and why we budget the way we do. We talk about enrollment projections, revenue and expenditure assumptions, and any other expenditure considerations for discussion. So as always, we base everything on our strategic roadmap, our core values. We do value those partnerships we have with the organizations that help us through this process, our innovation, we have respect for each other throughout this process. We really view wise stewardship and accountability and I strive for excellence throughout this whole process. And it does help ensure that strategic success as we build our budget. I do want to talk a little bit about current enrollment. And this is something that we have talked about and where are we at and how do we feel about our enrollment as we move forward? And I want to just talk and see if we can recall a year ago at this time when we were approving the preliminary budget for 2015-16, we were looking at adding 203 students at that time. That's what we preliminarily budgeted for at this same time last year. And then as enrollment came in and things were changing, Dr. Grover left the district, Dr. Stallow came in, and we had all this enrollment happening throughout our district. We knew that we had to upgrade in our budget and update, I should say, not upgrade, update our budget for December. And at that time, we had a longstanding history of losing 70 students from October 1 of that, of the current year until the end of the year. And so we really were monitoring that. And even in December, we just weren't sure that that, we were, you know, because that's our historical past, we anticipated that we would lose those 70 students. So in December, the board approved a budget based on an enrollment of 7,824 students, even though on October 1, we had enrollment of 7,905. So here we are, standing here, and I'm before you, a year later. We're at 7,892 students as of this time. That's 68 students over and above the December projection. So we certainly did not lose those 70 students. We lost about 13, as you can see by these numbers. So it's a total overall enrollment growth over last year of 350 students. Any questions about this enrollment? So moving forward for this budget cycle, we do utilize our school finance demographic study as a basis for our assumptions. We are estimating that average increase of 250 students. So our budget assumption is 8,150 students. That's what our budget is based off of. Kindergarten, we estimate at 585 students for the 16-17 school year. And currently, we have enrolled in our district for the 16-17 school year 8,080 students. So that's 70 students below what we're projecting right now for next year. Now, thinking back again a year, what happened over the summer, we gained from June, when we, at the same time last year, we approved that budget of 203 students. We actually gained 160 students between June 6th or 5th, when we approved that budget, and the start of school. So if that same process were to come true this year, you can see that we'll be well over our 8,150 students projected for next year's budget. I can't guarantee that will happen. I can't guarantee that will happen, because this is unprecedented times. I've just not seen this, it's, there isn't anything historical I can go back and review. And we can just continue to monitor and update the board as to where we are. So I'm giving you some of the historical perspective, but I really have a short history to look back on. Looking at kindergarten, just talking about that, where we're at to date, we have five hundred and sixty-two students enrolled for kindergarten for sixteen, seventeen. We are projecting that five eighty-five, and you can see we're only twenty-three students short of that number. So I am anticipating we'll far exceed that kindergarten enrollment projection that we have. Last year at this time, we had five hundred and thirty-five students enrolled for kindergarten, and we were projecting five hundred and seventy-five. And so we are at five seventy-five currently for this school year. So I do anticipate, again, much higher than anticipated enrollment. So when we talk about revenue, we really are, as you know, and boards talked about this many times, it is a complicated budget process that we do go through, because the legislature's made it very complicated for stu-, for education and funding for education. But we did receive two percent added to our basic formula, so we get six thousand and sixty-seven dollars per, per wadum, or it's also called adjusted pupil unit. So any student that's in grade K through six, we get a one point O FTE weighted average. So they, we received that six thousand and sixty-seven. But for students in grades seven through twelve, it's a one point two weighted average. So overall, we have a weighted average daily membership of eight thousand, nine thirty-eight. So everything is based on that weighted average number or adjusted pupil unit. As you can see, we have, our basic revenue is a little over fifty-two million dollars. Gifted and talent, we received some additional, this is called a categorical funding. We get additional thirteen dollars for adjusted pupil unit for gifted and talented. This is not for our Sage program. This is for programs such as Synergy and those additional gifted and talented programs that we have throughout our district. We have compensatory basic skills dollars. These dollars come from those students who qualify for free reduced lunches, or they're our most at-risk students, that along with our English learner dollars for those students who, English is not their first language. So those two, those two components make up our basic skills funding. Equity aid, this is interesting, this is not, this is, because we receive so much less dollars than other districts do in the metro area, the legislature said we have to make funding more equal across school districts. So for our district, what they do is they take your basic formula, and they take your referendum dollars. And they say, what's the ninety-fifth percentile, and what's the fifth percentile, and where do you fall in that? And if you fall a really low, like we do, we're at the twenty-fifth percentile, then we get some additional funding. And so that's where that money comes from. It's aid from the state of Minnesota, because we are so far below other, well, the ninety-fifth percentile. So we're not even close to average for the amount of revenue that we receive between our basic revenue and our, any referendum revenue that we receive. That's one point two million dollars. We receive literacy incentive aid. This is for proficiency in third grade and growth in fourth grade students. Shared time aid, this is for students who may attend our schools part-time, either homeschooled or from a parochial school for any reason whatsoever. Achievement and integration aid and levy, this is working with other school districts on meeting those integration requirements that we have. Safe schools levy, this is to pay for our liaison officers, and any other miscellaneous safety items that we may have, such as cameras, those types of things. Career and technical aid and levy, we get some money for career and technical classes that we teach throughout our high school. And then, of course, the long-term facility maintenance aid and levy, which we've talked about in the past couple minutes. Operating lease capital and our lease levy, these are aid and levy categories, is two point three million dollars. Our operating referendum, that's based on six hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-one cents for adjusted pupil unit. So you can see it's a little over six million dollars. And then additional local optional revenue is four hundred and twenty-four dollars per adjusted pupil unit. Special education aid is seven point seven million dollars. Learning and development, this is to help reduce or maintain class sizes in grades K through five. Staff development, that's two percent of our basic revenue that we reserve for staff development for our staff in the district. Indian education aid, this is a little bit more money that we've seen in the past, and it is based on twenty dollars for per pupil unit for those students that qualify for Indian education. And anything over twenty students, you get a little extra revenue, so we are at fifty thousand dollars there. Non-public and sparsity transportation aid, we do get a little bit of money, because our schools are spread out, our district is from one place to another. It's a very small amount, but we also get some additional for transporting our non-public students. Qcomp aid and levy is a little over two million dollars. Federal special ed and title programs, one point six million dollars. And, and our tuition fees, admissions and other local revenues is one point one. And that's such as admissions to our games and fees for different things that we have. And it's also miscellaneous revenue, such as this year when we did receive some insurance money for the roofing at Twin Oaks. So you would see that showing that same spot. So you can see, by this pie graph, what, the majority of our dollars comes from state aid. Between state aid and state special education aid, we're looking at about eighty percent of our funding coming from those sources. And then federal programs is almost two percent, although the local revenue is a little over one. And then our local property taxes is sixteen point five five. As we work through our expenditure assumptions, the current staffing wages and benefits, any increases to that is two point three million dollars. We did have a new transportation contract this year, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase. Our men cap's lease is eighty thousand. We do anticipate our utilities going up simply because of the change in the peak control in our district. And we no longer can just have peak control happen throughout the summer months. We have to adhere to that during the wintertime as well. And we all know that we can't just close school in the wintertime when they have a peak control for utilities, so we will lose some funding there, or some savings there. And then supplies and materials and furniture, I currently have budgeted for eighty thousand. As you know, as we continue to grow and see that enrollment, that number most likely will go, continue to go up as we need to take non-traditional classrooms and make them into classrooms. So that total is two point six million dollars. Additional expenditures, because of our growth at the current time, anticipating two hundred and fifty students, we have six hundred and twenty-five thousand and ten teaching staff to meet those targets. We need additional buses to help us transport those students, that's another hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We definitely have some need to have staff in our buildings throughout the summer, those secretaries and activities. As we continue to grow, we have need for those in our district during the summer months, that's fifty-one thousand dollars. Special education, as you can see, I've increased that. Mr. Montz's report this, this evening had those additional one point two FTE for special education. And that cost a social worker and a guidance counselor to help us with some of our ALC needs that we have, and the assessment coordinator costs, and a point five curriculum and instruction secretary that was approved tonight. So a total of a little over four million dollars in expenditures. And you can see our expenditures by program. You can see that the majority is regular and special education instruction, make up the, about seventy-five percent of that cost, including the instructional support that we have. Operations and maintenance, administration and district support round out those expenditures. If you want to see what our district, how our district compares to other surrounding districts, I took five closest districts to us, Burnsville, Lakeville, Eastern Carver County and Shakopee. And you can see that we're in the gold bar, and that we spend less. In the majority of areas, we're the lowest in several compared to other school districts surrounding us in our expenditures. And I think a lot of, we had some questions, we had our audit that said we spend less, almost two thousand dollars less than the seven county metro area. And I think that this shows that we actually do. This is the latest data I have, is last year's fourteen, fifteen information. Of course, we're not finished with the current school year yet, so I don't have that data for the current year. Any questions on this information?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
For as long as I've been around and on the board, going back a long time, it's always been the goal to keep our administrative costs at four percent or less. And I think one of the things that's, I think I want to, I want to say is that as districts get bigger, and we've grown so much since I was first elected to the board, you know, almost twenty years ago, one of the easiest things for districts to do as they get bigger is to get top heavy, and if you don't pay attention. And we haven't done that. If that number has stayed at or below four percent as long, far back as I can remember, so I want to commend everybody assisting this table and administration as well for doing what it takes to keep that number where I think it belongs.
So if we look at where we'll end up the year, you can see I've parsed all of this information into the correct assigned and unassigned categories, below the line, and then in the unbolded area, restricted. Those are really specific areas that we have to spend those dollars. It has to be spent for specific purposes, so those are below there. The unassigned and the assigned and the bold above, those are areas that could be moved around and spent. But we do have some things assigned for different issues that we have working throughout the district, such as the innovative programs that we are working with, with men caps and those types of things. Overall, we're just at that, our fund balance policy is eight to twelve percent, and we're sitting just slightly over twelve percent right now. However, I will have to say that I'm going to be coming back at the end of June to talk about the current year budget and adjusting for those additional students. But we also have some additional expenditures as well, such as the middle school relief and those different things that we've had expenditures. So we will be, I will be bringing that back, and when I do that, I will also update this for the board for those fund balances, so that they're correct as we move forward. And I do think that we will stay within that eight to twelve percent fund balance policy as we move forward. And moving towards the other funds, as you know, the general fund is the biggest part of our budget process, but we do have other funds in the district, our food service fund. Later tonight, one of the requests is that we increase lunch prices ten percent to comply with those federal program requirements. Our community service fund, those revenues and expenditures based on program offerings. Our internal service funds, that is increasing because we are self-insured health insurance and dental. And so that's showing up in that internal service fund, and we are seeing a six percent increase in that health insurance. And then our OPEB, as you recall, last year, we did not levy for those other post-employment benefits for our district, even though we do have an obligation to meet that liability in this district. Right now, it's an interest-only allocation with a very minor three hundred and seven dollar levy adjustment that's included in there. So you can see all other funds are included. And you can see the total building fund is that twelve million, seven, ten to accommodate for the bond that was passed.
Julie, it's ten cent increase.
Ten cent, what did I say?
Ten percent.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, ten cent increase. Thank you for that correction. So this is what I brought forward to the board. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a, I just question or comment, the OPEB, you know, you addressed the OPEB. What is that liability that we have out there?
I think it's a little over ten million dollars.
Okay, so we have six million right now.
Great, okay.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Any other, just a presentation, correct?
No, you need to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, missed that. Here we go. Okay, there we go, yeah, preliminary budget. Okay, do, I have a motion to approve the preliminary budget as presented.
So?
By Ben, second?
Second.
Dan? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero. You're up still.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've talked about the Southwest Metro School Intermediate District. Now that they have switched over to an intermediate district. And as, the reason that they switched to an intermediate district is that they, as a member of that intermediate, intermediate district, we can be, we, we would levy on their behalf so they can maintain their buildings as well. Our district is the biggest user of the Southwest Intermediate District at twenty-two percent, that we see that we utilize that the most. Other districts involved in that are Shakopee, Eastern Carver County, McCona, Jordan, New Prairie, some of those districts that surround us as well. And I think Buffalo now is a new member as well. So it does have, spreads out quite large. And we may see this adjust as it goes on. But this would only be for not this school year, but it would be for the seventeen, eighteen school year. But it would be this preliminary levy this fall. And what they're looking for right now, I know, is forty-two thousand dollars as part of their process. And one of the things, as part of their, the program, all school districts have to approve them to levy in order for that to work. If one school district says no, they would be unable to levy for any of their work moving forward. So this is a resolution that we would approve that, and so that they could do some of the work on their buildings as well. Part of being a member of that district.
Okay, Todd.
So this is the same long-term maintenance facility that we just talked about in our old business?
That is correct.
Just for a different school district that we participate in, and?
Their, their max that they would levy for is two hundred thousand dollars, and we would see twenty-two percent of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, any other questions, Dan?
And then, would we similarly see a list of projects as they would come before we?
Certainly can, yes, definitely. I, I have seen that list of projects that they have, but I can bring that forward or to a facilities committee as well.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution approving Southwest Metro Intermediate School District two eighty-eight's long-term facility maintenance program and budget, and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of these projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue?
So moved.
By Todd, second?
I'll second the motion.
By Rich, this is a roll call vote, Chad?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
That passes seven zero. And you're still up.
Yes, I am. One of the big, one of our things that we have really looked at is our fixed costs in our district. And how can we really monitor those fixed costs in one of the areas? One of the areas is in our property liability and workers' compensation. A year ago, we had a, a mod rate, if you want what they term, a mod rate of one point three eight percent for our workers' comp. And anything over one percent, they said, that, you know, it's really, you'll see, continue to see costs rise. And so I had a little bet with Mark building that we couldn't get down below one, and he said that will never happen. So I hope he's listening tonight, because we now have a mod rate of point nine nine. So we do have a big savings in our workers' compensation. It's offset a little bit by our increase in our property. But I have challenged Mark to go back and really look at our property and see if there's a way to bring that down. So this would be the maximum that we would pay. But I am still working with Mark to look at our property insurance and see if we can't bring that cost down as well. So I'm hoping that the, the least decrease is nine, nine thousand dollars, but I'm hoping for a better decrease in there as well. This is the information I have right now.
Okay, and you're looking for approval?
Approval of our property liability and workers' compensation insurance.
Okay, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the property liability and workers' comp insurance renewal as listed? as listed?
So moved.
By Ben, second?
Second.
By Dan, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Okay. Uh, next up is a recommendation for Prior Lake High School Lunch Program.
Good evening, Chair Wellbord and Dr. Stallow. First, would you mind if I started with the possible award of our bids, our dairy and bakery, because that's also on the agenda?
Um.
Can I do it all together, or?
Well, no, why don't we, why don't we just stick with the?
Start with this?
Yep.
Okay, sure, no problem. All right, so it's been about a year since we have been off the USDA School Lunch Program. So I'm going to go over what this year looked like financially speaking, as well as what our stakeholders told us through our surveys. And due to our dedicated manager and staff at that school, we had some favorable outcomes, definitely. Oh, okay, there we go. Okay, so looking at our revenue, April year-to-date, so this slide compares three things. One, projecting what our revenue would have been if we would not have opted to go off the program. Two, last year, what we projected we would do in revenue if we went off the program. And then three, this year, what we actually did in revenue. So this slide shows three scenarios in the areas of government reimbursement, revenue from paid meals, and revenue from à la carte. Got my glasses on too, that's kind of hard to read, I apologize. So if you look at not opting out, would you like me to go over the numbers, or can you read them? Maybe I'll just jump to the totals column. Not opting out, total revenue would have been about $613, or excuse me, $613,000, 24300. Forecasted, what we forecasted if we opted out, $889,823. And what we actually did off the program was $1,073,237. So you can see there was a difference of about $460,000 between not opting out and opting out. Do you have any questions on this data at this time? Some of the reasons that we actually made more than we forecasted is we had a great year at the high school. Emily did a fabulous job with her meals, and then of course, the addition of the coffee house, and our meal participation increased, à la carte participation increased, and of course, the Lake House Cafe opened up. Our meal participation increased about 10 percent, and our à la carte participation increased about 17 percent. So those were some great numbers. Looking at our expenses, of course, those two were also up this year. The more meals you serve, the more you're probably going to spend, and that was the case. Our total overall expenses were up about 30, a little over $32,000. And of that, our food costs are up about $66,000, but that's because we're serving more food, lot more fresh fruits and vegetables, higher quality products, it all bumps that up. So our government reimbursement loss was higher than forecasted, actually, for opting out, and that was due to an increase in meal participation. So the more meals we did, of course, we would have gotten more government reimbursement. So it actually was a difference of about $100,000 of lost government funding for opting off the program, but as you saw, the revenues we brought in far outweighed that. And so as of year-to-date, our revenue versus expenses is about $72,000. We also did some surveys this year, find out what our kids were thinking. It was mostly students that answered our survey. We had about 150 students answer our survey this year, compared to about 1,500 last year. So these were the results. Basically, you can see in orange there, the overall satisfaction was higher in many categories compared to last year. So I won't take time to go over each, each and every one, but you can kind of get a visual there of, of where we landed with overall satisfaction. Okay, hang on. Do this, there we, there we go. In our survey, we asked the question, why do you tend not to eat school lunch? This is the same question we asked last year as well. And as you can see, many of the reasons went down, which is a good thing, with the exception of the lines being too long, that actually went up quite a bit on this survey. So, based on that, this next slide is actually pertaining to all of our schools. I am asking the board to consider a proposed price increase across the board, even at our high school of 10 cents. So our elementaries would go to 255, our middle schools 265, Bridges 265, our high school to 305, and then elementary breakfast at $1.60. We also are under regulation by USDA to raise those prices a minimum of 10 cents. Of course, not at our high school because we're off the program, but at our other schools. So if we want to discuss that at this time, I would ask the board to consider that price increase.
Okay. Discussion, yep, Melissa.
Janine, help us, when was the last time we raised prices? Was it two years ago?
Last year.
Last year.
Mm-hmm. And before that, I guess I wasn't on board, so I'm not sure the last time we raised prices before that. But we still have a little ways to go before we hit where we're supposed to be on the price equity calculator for the USDA.
We've increased usually the minimum that's been required by the MDA.
I know last year, when you brought this proposal forward, you talked about a break-even point when our free and reduced lunch population grows much larger than it's currently at. Where are we at on that projection?
Well, we said 12 percent free and reduced rate. We're at 11.2. Last year, when we proposed going off the program, we were at 10.5. It's kind of a wheel in motion, though. We never guessed that our participation and our à la carte participation would have grown so much, so it's really helped offset that funding that we have lost. So we're still saying 12 percent, but once we hit the 12 percent mark, I would say that's not an automatic, you know, opting back in, that it would be something we'd have to look at to see where we're at.
So the recommendation tonight is to continue to next year? Continue opting out from one more year?
For one more year, yeah.
Okay. And then, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, the 12 percent, is that district-wide or is that just the site? Just the high school site? Okay. District-wide, whatever. Same close to the same, okay.
And then, we could continue. You've had a lot of emphasis this year on the high school program. Do you have any information on the middle school and elementary program?
I do.
Because we'd like to increase customer and parental satisfaction with those areas just as much as we would like to increase it at the high school.
Absolutely. Well, we also surveyed those schools as well, those stakeholders, and although I don't have a slide showing you those results, I can tell you that at our middle schools, 65, as far as the quality of service, 65 percent rated us as favorable. And by the way, I don't have any statistics from last year because this is the first year we did a survey, so we'll be able to benchmark a little bit better for next year. Overall satisfaction in general, 65 percent. The lines being too long, their numbers were about 17 percent, and overall quality of the food was 73 percent. For our elementaries, overall satisfaction was about 83 percent, quality of food 80 percent, quality of service 90 percent. Line being too long, 13 percent, and 69 percent felt that the quality of the food program improved this year. So I was happy with those numbers, and actually, we've increased our participation at all elementaries and at our middle schools in both meals and à la carte. So those numbers back it up as well. We still have some room to grow, and we'll have plans for next year to do so, but last year was a good year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so there's two things on the table. First, the USDA to opt out of, at Prior Lake High School. So I think I'd look, I'd probably do two separate motions here. So I'd like to see a motion to request action to recommend that Prior Lake High School opt out of the 1617 school year on the USDA regulation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. And then, secondly, the student meal prices, the 10 cent for all full meal price increase for the upcoming school year 201617. The prices are listed in your packet, and Janine has gone through those. Do I have a motion to approve the 10 cent increase for next year?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Todd. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 7-0. Okay.
Okay, great. Moving on to our bakery and dairy bids, I'm asking the board to consider my recommendation to award Hastings Creamery the milk bid for 201617, and I believe you all have a grid with the prices broken down, and you can see off that grid that Hastings came in the lowest.
Do we have a slide for that, or no? By chance, we don't have that slide?
I don't have a slide for that, no. Do you want me to go over the numbers verbally?
Um, I, well, I guess, is there any questions? I just have one question. I don't know if you all stills. On the Hastings, it looks like there, can you explain the difference between the firm per half pint and the escalated per half pint? Because they're the only ones that seem to do good on both.
Right. The Consumer Price Index is predicting that milk prices will increase about 2 percent this year, so I believe that's why a lot of the milk companies didn't do a firm. The escalated price is based on, you know, a prediction and a forecast of where the cost of packaging, butter, fat, fuel, all that's going to go this year. So even at an escalated, when I extrapolated the numbers out to our usage on our bid and took into consideration the escalated price, I was able to see that Hastings came in, even though it was, it's somewhat obvious on this graph, extrapolating the numbers, they still did come in lower, so. And I can tell you those totals if you want.
Oh, it's okay, I just, we see it on the chart. Okay. Any questions? Any questions? Um, all right, and then the bakery, did we talk about bakery? I mean, did you want?
Uh, I'm also asking to consider approving Earth Grains Bakery for our bakery bid, and as you can see there, they're the obvious lowest bidder, so both of these are based on price.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the milk and dairy products for 201617 contracts as Hastings Co-op Creamery and Earth Greens?
So moved.
By Chad, second?
Second.
By Melissa? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next up is the bids for the roof, Prior Lake High School roof.
Good evening again. Last Thursday, we had bid opening for High School Roof. Roof sections RS, S1 and S2, and roof sections B, C, and G. The apparent low bidder, or the lowest qualified bidder, was Schwickert's, and their bid, combination bid came in at $1,075,000. And I am looking for approval to accept this bid.
Okay. Do you have any questions? All right. Okay, it looks like we had six bidders. All right, seeing no questions? Oh, go ahead, Rich.
Have you worked with Schwickert's before?
Yep. Actually, they're working on tunnels right now.
Okay.
Those are the past.
Okay.
I just want to add that we did budget $1.2 million for this project, and it did come in quite a bit less than we anticipated.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve Schwickert's Tecta America as the bidder for the Prior Lake High School roof?
So moved.
Was that Ben? Ben, second?
Second.
By Todd. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Next up is open enrollment.
I got that, thank you. The purpose of open enrollment has been to balance out class sizes and to fill grade levels. Open enrollment puts our buildings at the most efficient usage. You have the numbers that I'm sure you reviewed, and our recommendation this evening, based on the current space and the enrollment numbers, is to immediately close Glendale and Redtail Ridge to open enrollment at all grade levels. So the board has requested to approve the resolution as printed.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Comments?
I guess just a comment. These two schools are in the areas which have the highest building, a new residential, and this does not preclude those new families that move into those areas from attending the schools, correct?
Correct.
So we still, in theory, could face a space crunch.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And maybe, I guess I just have a question. So where are we at this year with our attendance? I mean, I know Barb's here, but for Redtail and Glendale numbers, I mean, I'd just like a little discussion on it.
Seven hundred.
Currently, oh, for next year?
Six ninety?
Six ninety-five.
Six ninety-five.
And then Glendale's at 576, Julie, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
595 this year.
Redtail Ridge, the numbers for Redtail Ridge, they currently have 682, 682 students there. They have an, already enrolled for next year is 695. That's a four-section school, the same size as Jeffers Pond, and so we have currently four classes of five sections at Redtail Ridge, and that building certainly was not built for that many sections of students in that building.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion to close open enrollment at Glendale and Redtail Ridge Elementary Schools for 201617?
So moved.
By Chad, second?
Second.
By Melissa? This is a roll call vote. Chad?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Aye. Rich?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
That passes 7-0. Okay. Uh, next up, there's nothing on policy tonight, administrative reports.
Dr. Stallow. Thank you. At Prior Lake area, Prior Lake Savage area schools, our mission is to educate all earners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. Our collective work is focused on that mission, and tonight, I'd like to report on some of the work in which we have been engaged. First of all, I want to publicly thank everyone who took the time to learn about the referendum and to vote. Given the time so many stakeholders spent developing and refining the proposal on behalf of our students through the demographic review committee, as a board, as an administrative team, as school staff, and as interested community members, it is very disappointing voters did not approve our request. The request was based on a year of community input and planning to address growth by providing space, technology, and security for our almost 8,000 students. Those needs are real. They have not gone away. They will only continue to grow. We owe it to our students, our families, and our community to determine why the referendum failed and to find a way to address the very real needs. Until we do, classes will get increasingly crowded, and we may need to make some tough decisions about attendance boundaries and how to allocate limited funds across growing classrooms, building, and security needs. We are considering several action steps to help us listen, learn, and plan. We'll ask our community, both formally through an anonymous survey, a phone survey, and informally through conversations and gatherings, why they voted no, or why they didn't vote at all. We'll analyze voting records from the Secretary of State to see if there are voting patterns that we should learn from. For example, did our parents vote? If not, why not? Develop a facilities task force with broad community representation to review our growth needs and help us identify an alternative solution or solutions to address those needs. And continue to be fiscally responsible with the funds we have, doing the best we can for our taxpayers and students. We will also implement contingency plans to address growth pressures in some of our buildings. We were clear with the community about action that may be taken if the referendum failed. As a school board, you determined that without additional funding, class sizes would increase, growth would continue to add pressure on schools. Elementary attendance boundaries may need to change due to school overcrowding. Our ability to maintain classroom technology and innovative programming may be limited, and we would not be able to improve security at all buildings. Our job as leaders of this school district is to unite on behalf of our students and to look forward. As your superintendent, that is what I will do. In other news, the annual Bridges Senior Recognition Banquet was held at Fong's last Thursday night, celebrating Bridges students. Some of the seniors have already graduated, some will graduate later this summer, or perhaps next year, and some will walk across the stage with their peers at Dan Patch Stadium this Friday night. As you know, we have an excellent partnership with the Prior Lake Rotary, who conducts the Strive Mentorship Program with Bridges students. Last week, Rotarians awarded 10 scholarships to students who are contributing their, who are continuing their education at either post-secondary institutions or in the military. Congratulations Bridges students and staff, and thank you Rotarians for your commitment to students. Prior Lake High School seniors Austin Craft and David Young are among the 2016 College-sponsored National Merit Scholarship winners. Officials of each sponsor college select their scholarship winners from among the finalists of the National Merit Scholarship Program, who plan to attend their institution. These awards provide between $500 and $2,000 annually for up to four years of undergraduate study at the institution's financing the scholarship. Both Austin and David will be attending the University of Minnesota. Edgewood, Grainwood, Jeffers Pond, Lola de Lago, and Westwood held their annual environmental education, or ESTEM, festivals throughout the month of May. Students were able to enjoy the outdoors while also incorporating ESTEM principles, including building bird nests, learning about migration, and planting rain gardens. Five Hocks, Glendale, and Redtail Ridge hold their ESTEM festivals in the fall. ESTEM learning is also alive and well at the middle school level. One example includes a recent eighth-grade project where Hidden Oaks and Twin Oaks students launched two high-altitude balloons as a continuation of their studies of astronomy and meteorology. In partnership with the Minnesota Space Grant Consortium, the students designed a payload and calculated all the specifics needed to send a balloon into near space. The scientific payload has been collecting altitude, temperature, GPS, air pressure data, and even has a GoPro camera attached to capture images, which you can see on YouTube. The students have been analyzing the data as the balloon travels up into the atmosphere to learn more about the conditions at higher altitudes. Talk about real-world and relevant learning to engage students, really impressive. Finally, the commencement ceremony will take place this Friday at 7:30 PM at Dan Patch Stadium. I know the high school is still working on the final numbers, but it's looking like we can expect 620 students to walk across the stage Friday night under warm and dry skies that evening. I'm looking forward to congratulating all of our students on their tremendous achievements. Thank you.
Administrator reports this evening? Board reports? Maddie, your last student council report.
There's not too much left to report. All of our events lately have gone well, and it's pretty much just banquet season now, but I think all the clubs and activities are done. So, yeah, we're done.
All right. Final report. Okay, and lastly, future events. The last day of school is June 9th, 2016. Commencement, as stated earlier, is June 10th, 2016, at Dan Patch Stadium at 7:30, rain or shine. The board retreat, we have Saturday, June 18th, 2016, here at the DSC. It says 8 o'clock. I've seen 8:30 too. Is it 8 or 8:30? I guess, we'll get clarification on that. What? It's 8 o'clock, okay. And then, the board work session and regular meeting for business is June 27th, 2016, at 6 PM. All right, seeing nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Chad?